Board of the Dartmouth Select Board, fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence honoring our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome, everyone. The warrant has been signed.
Correct.
And we are ready to move on to appointments, six thirty P. M., change of officers, directors, LLC managers from Shaw's supermarket. He looks like a retailer to me.
No, I'm an attorney for a retailer.
Okay.
Close enough, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quill, Dean Miller. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board. Here on behalf of Shaw's supermarkets, this is just an administrative housekeeping change. It's a change of officers and directors for the liquor license. What is on the application is the removal of Mr. Gary Morton as a director, vice president, treasurer, and assistant secretary, and is in his place adding a Mr. Cody Purdue as a director, treasurer, and group vice president. Also removing a John Scuchamara as a director and in his place adding an Eric Myers as a new director. So we needed to file this amendment application with the town. Just looking to update the individuals with what's on file with the state to make sure that the liquor license is in line with what's on file with the state for the officers and directors. No operational changes to the store itself, no changes to the manager of record, no changes to the operation hours, no changes to anything in the store whatsoever. This is just a corporate administrative update and change. Happy to answer any questions if you have any, Mr. Chair, but it's pretty straightforward and administrative.
Pretty much easy.
Motion to approve.
A second down. Anybody have any questions or Mr. Gracie, excuse me, Mr. Gracie, our fifth member is supposed to be on Zoom. I don't see him there yet, so we'll be voting, four of us at this point in time. Without any questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
You and your family.
I guess he doesn't work at the store.
No.
Okay. Okay.
He's a beggar.
I saw him doing seafood the other day. Six thirty-two, thirsty at the Cove License Discussion. Do we have someone here from? Ah, excellent. Please state your name and who you are and what you do, please.
My name is Gina St. Aubin. I am the manager and owner of the Thirsty Whale, and this is my husband, Sean St. Aubin, and he is also the owner of the Thirsty Whale.
So, Mr. Chair. Yes, we are in the process of renewing licensing, alcohol licenses for the year. Previously, this license came up and because there had been some issues with some calls for police, the board had asked for the owners and managers to come in to discuss the calls to the service.
Yes. So...
One sec. Wait. Any comments from the members first before we hear from the...
Yeah, well, this is one of the reasons, one of the things that we've asked started last year on any alcohol licensing is any police reports coming from any establishments. And when it came time to start renewing, lo and behold, we had several, in fact, probably about a half a dozen different reports for the course of the year coming from your establishment. And going through them, there's some pretty significant problems here that needs to be addressed. This, under the state of mass, under the, under the current guidelines by the A. B. C. C., this board really is not, we can't do anything in the way of imposing penalties on an establishment when it comes to liquor, but the only thing we have the ability to do is not to approve a license.
Okay.
And going through, going through the problems here, you have one situation on May twenty-ninth where you had a patron brandishing a firearm. There was another patron on that same night who was sitting at a bar stool with a ripped shirt. You had a disturbance on July third, a disturbance and an altercation the day after on July fourth. On July sixteenth, you had another disturbance, a fight on the August, I mean, October second. Loud parties, somebody complained of everything was too loud. On September fifth, you had an employee call saying that there was a fight in the parking lot and the patrons didn't want to leave. The twenty-sixth of October, another disturbance behind the bar. And then on the twenty-ninth, you had the stabbing. And then February fifth, I guess because of the location of the location of the Thirsty Whale, sometimes New Bedford gets called and...
Yes.
Darmouth gets called, so this was an assistance by the town. This one was a disturbance again, so, I mean, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's way too many, way, way too many.
So...
I personally, I'm not, I don't want to pull the license, but you guys have got to clean up your act completely because...
We have.
I'm just, well, I mean, I haven't, okay, I mean, we are thirty days away from...
The last incident.
The last incident, okay? So we haven't seen anything since, and I hope not to see anymore, but I will tell you this, okay? Based upon what I've seen here, I would have absolutely no hesitation to yank your license.
I know, and I totally, I can totally understand where you're coming from, sir. And like I said, if we have a quick breakdown of different things, there's a different, like, timeline, how everything came in.
Hang on a second. What I'd like to do, the format to be, is I'd like to hear your response, and we do have the chief in the audience tonight, and if it's okay with you, Chief, if you have comments or anybody else would like to hear from you afterwards, okay?
I mean, I mean, I, I'm not going to say, I mean, I do have, I do have experience in, I've been a bartender, I've been a bouncer, you know, I've been involved in crowd control in an establishment, so I know what it takes. I know there has been, you, alcohol entices knuckleheads, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. I mean, it happens. People get a few in them, they, all of a sudden, they become liquid courage, and next thing you know, they're, you know, the answer to everything, and they're absolutely zeros. So I understand that, and I understand, but there has, there's got to be, your servers have to recognize a point where somebody is starting to be overly served. And once you grab the handle on that, situations that arise from somebody being too intoxicated is greatly reduced. So the servers have to be aware as to how many times they're serving somebody, how many times, you know, somebody is drinking, you know, the number of drinks per hour...
Yep.
Per two hours or per seating, you know? That has to be, that has to be well within your, your manual for serving. I mean, it's, it's in tips, offers that a lot, but you have to, it has to be completely reinforced with your staff. Same thing with any kind of crowd control person, door person, you know, they have to recognize, you know, the situations and, and kind of deal with it, you know? And if you need to call the authorities, then the authorities should be called as soon as possible before it gets out of hand. Because the last thing you also don't want to do is you also don't want to piss off your neighbors because at two o'clock in the morning, you got somebody yelling and screaming...
Right.
You know, and then it's waking, it's waking the people up in the neighborhood.
Oh, of course.
So...
But going back on a few situations, what you're talking about...
Excuse me, whoever's going to talk, use the microphone.
Oh, sorry, all right.
That's okay.
So we have a whole breakdown, and like I said, before a lot of this, we noticed we were getting a little bit rough of a crowd. And going back to what you're saying, we are one of those last call bars. We have a two A. M. liquor license, so it's unfortunate that we do get a late stop. So we have patrons coming from downtown, this, that. We can't assume how much they've been drinking. Yes, my girls know, they're all tip certified, they know, and they can tell by actions on somebody, how much they had. We have implemented a security company. I have two guys, I mean, we're wanding at the door, anybody coming in. We've never had an issue inside our establishment. Our biggest issue is, and what we've done to change it was, basically at the end of the night, we're at capacity, Friday, Saturday. And I understand, maybe neighbors are complaining, this place has never been to where it's at right now. So I understand this a little bit, people are comfortable with COVID when we're closed for a year. Now we opened up, we got a lot of calls when we first opened up during COVID, saying cops were telling us we were doing things wrong. Detective came in, watched the whole thing, all he saw was one person dancing at a chair. Everybody had food on a table, everything was done correctly, all during COVID, had no issues. But with being shut down for a year, the neighbors, you know, got used to that, and now going back, we've got this place, you know, we're doing good, and honestly, we didn't expect come July, end of June, beginning of July, that's when we started getting the rough crowd. So what we did was, we, we changed things around. I have the younger kids at the end of the night hanging out in the parking lot, getting bottles with cops across the street, they're getting bottles out their car, drinking in the parking lot, me and my guys are out there. Me and my wife are there every Friday, Saturday. Because like I said, we were trying to get this under control, making sure, implemented new security, we're using lockdown security, it's a Nest Security Company, they're trained, we're pulling fake IDs left and right. Basically, what else they do is they come, they have their own liability insurance. So basically, I have two guys at the door, we go out at the end of the night, two guys are outside trying to clear, we help the offices. I mean, we've been, with certain situations, we've, you know, helped, we've done whatever we could, but we can't control people go across the street to the parking lot. The biggest thing, and I'm kind of glad this came up because I didn't know who to address what the matter was, is that fine line between New Bedford and Dartmouth. Because certain events happen and one's pointing the finger, oh, this is New Bedford, the other one's pointing the finger Dartmouth, it's not helping us any. We're doing our part, but then yet, again, like I said, certain situations arise, and I've had a couple of times where New Bedford's told me with certain altercations that I should file a complaint against Dartmouth because they're not handling things correctly or doing, and I don't want to rock the boat with Dartmouth.
Actually, we could settle that right now, okay? Your liquor license is issued by this board.
Yes.
Any issues you have that you need to require the police department, you call Dartmouth.
And that's why I'm glad this meeting arise, because now it's like, I'm sometimes with the, like, the nonsense calls we get because it's just people outside, you know what I mean? And I get it, neighbors are going to call, we got big groups. One thing I've changed is I notice is when we're at full capacity, we're calling last call at one forty-five, well, one thirty, I'm sorry, one thirty last call, and we're letting people out by one forty-five, right? Because I got everybody out of this building at one fifty-five, no later than two. But now the biggest issue is, it's like opening the floodgates, everybody's going out at once. So what we did is to change that, and I'm sure Dartmouth has seen in the last two, two months, that it's been a big difference from where we were at the end of the summer. So basically, what we're doing is I'm calling last call, one o'clock, one ten, giving Pete, and then putting the lights on about one twenty instead of one forty-five. So now it gives people, when the lights come on, some people like, oh, party's over, they start going out slowly on their own. Then you got the people that like to hang till the last possible minute, and then, hey, that's fine, because now we're structuring how we're releasing everybody at once, so we don't have that commotion outside, you know? So I just, like I said, we're just, we're doing different things. I'll let her go down the list with you because we've, we've done a bunch of different things with, like, especially with hoods, we were getting a rough crowd, certain bars closed down in our area, and unfortunately, we didn't want it, this wasn't her vision, I did this for her, and basically, it wasn't her vision of what the outcome was going to be. So we are cleaning things up, we're doing the best we can, and...
From, from my experience in the past, what you're doing is what was done thirty, forty years ago.
Oh, really?
Okay? So, you know, the early, the early last call, the lights going on, letting, you know, the crowd slowly move out. I mean, I worked at Smugglers when you had two different nightclubs going at the same time, okay? One club, we used to let out an hour first so that that club would leave before the others started, because when you let both of them out, more than likely, there was going to be a fight, or there was going to be, there was going to be instances. So, I mean, I can, I'm not here to say I'm going to, you know, I'm going to vote to pull your license, I'm going to make a motion to approve your license, but we're going to keep track of what's going on there.
No.
So, but we just want, we just want to make sure, to make you aware that we are aware.
Oh, of course.
And that, you know, we want to make sure that you're doing what, you're doing what you need to do to protect your business, but also to protect your patrons.
Oh, of course.
You know, especially, especially the people that don't get involved with the knuckleheads. Because chances are, the knuckleheads are going to hurt the ones that don't get involved.
Exactly.
Okay, Mr. Mickelson, you have something to say?
Yes. It's disturbing to me that this is an on and on and on incidence with, with the establishment. But what about the establishments in the town of Dartmouth that abide by the rules, run a really good club, always run a good club? We don't ever see them, ever. So, so the onus has been on you, and this is repetitive. And, and it seems to me that you, now that you know that the shit hit the fan, now you're here saying that you're going to make changes.
We implemented changes.
Time out. Again, I just honor and I'm very, I'm happy to, to see that the establishments pay attention to their business and make sure this kind of stuff doesn't happen in their building. You apparently did not do that, and that, that's disturbing to me.
Well, can I correct, can we correct you there, sir? By, we're just briefing you on a few things, because basically, back in, I got a call from Detective Frank Olivera. This was back on September twenty-seventh. So basically, he said we had, we had about thirty calls in, which I was like, that's a lot, you know, and I mean, you're saying a half a dozen. So now, basically, I've talked with him, this was on September twenty-seventh, we came in front of the board, March...
Twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth, and I believe it was you, Sean, that picked up the phone and said, we've been doing a great job, nothing's happened here, we were running it with my partner...
For three years.
For three years before this. We came in front of the board, March twenty-seventh. You said, see this, you picked up your cell phone, this goes a long way. We've never gotten one call since we've done this, since we've been involved in this, from the new ownership. So basically, like I said, starting in end of June, July, with certain bars in our area closing down, getting that rough crowd, I mean, hey, we got hit with that, we understand, but we can't racial profile who we can let in or, or, you know, choose and pick, you know, if somebody's coming in here, they're going to come in, I can't, you know, say, you can't come in because of, you know, what you're wearing. But we changed up our dress code, we've, we don't even do twenty-one plus events, we do twenty-five plus because that younger crowd on the weekend, we noticed that, this was going before, like, the beginning of summer, we saw the problems with them not leaving the parking lot, drinking bottles, so we said, you know what, let's change it to twenty-five plus events. And you can go to our Facebook, and you'll see, any flyer we have states twenty-five plus, and you can go back, along with the dress code we post on there. What we're doing too also is no entry after one A. M., so that people like to come at one forty, one thirty, one forty-five. Why do I want you in my establishment when you've been to other places all night? And then now you're going to come here because we're the last ones that are open.
And no reentry.
And no, and no reentry. So if you leave to go smoke, we're trying to be considerate of our neighbors, we used to let people go out and smoke after one, there's no more smoking outside, you know, there should be nobody outside after that time, you know? We hired the security company, we got two guys on, we're patting down, we're wanding, I bought the i-Det, talked with Detective Frank Olivera, he wanted me to put no loiter in signs so the, the police could take action. But what I'm concerned about is when we didn't have the no loitering signs, you know, there'd be four, five, you know, six cruisers, some nights there's two, some nights there's three, four, depending. When we had that big crowd in the parking lot, basically what happened is one girl got handcuffed, but then released. I just feel that there's no discipline to these people to let them realize, you know, what the consequences are. I mean, so that's the other thing, and this is where I'm kind of glad, like I said, this came up so that I would like to know who I can call, address, talk to, if I can keep in touch with Frank Olivera about this or ongoing events. The last two months have been great, no issues, no nothing, and as far as that stabbing that you brought up, that had nothing to do with, it happened in front of our bar, but it was a patron that was in our bar, he already left. He was outside at his car on the street, there was an altercation with somebody peeing on the car or something, detectives know about it, and that's where it all came out. The patrons that pulled up, which we got on camera, they weren't even in our establishment. You know, they just rolled up on him, I don't know how he knew he was there, or if it was one of his buddies and they called, but it, they got a call from, to go to Cumberland's right after that, that occurred at our place, and then it happened right down the street to Sebastian's, you know what I mean? So it's, that wasn't directly anything that we've done. Like I said, we've never had to have the cops come into our establishment for any altercation, any fight, anything like that. The biggest issue we have is when everybody's leaving at the end of the night, depending on what type of crowd it is, that was the only big issue.
Okay, I'm going to have a comment, but I think I would like to hear from the chief first. Thank you.
May I sit down?
Yeah, you can.
Or just stand up there.
Step aside, sure. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. There have been improvements that we've, we've noticed that they have made. It was a little slower implementation than we would have liked. A lot of the improvements have been made with the security being one of the largest ones. Initially, I think there might have been one bartender working some nights, and it was a female by herself. Clearly, that's, that's a concern based on the crowd that you've heard about and that we've seen at the establishment. So that was a big improvement, having the, the two security personnel there. We're also aware of the age restriction that they put in place. There was people basically sneaking in, let's say, at one point without the security at the door, people they didn't really want in there, would, someone would open the door, they would then come in inside the establishment. So having that security has been critical. The parking lot's an issue, the security, like you talked about, the inside's been, been well-run for the most part. The problem is, is, is on the outside, and that's what we're seeing, the crowd when they leave, it's like a mass exodus, a lot of times, it looks like a small riot every night when they, when they leave the establishment, which does make it difficult for us, even when we are present there, and we're present whenever possible every night. You've heard about our presence, it varies based on other calls in town, but whenever possible, we have officers there each night. Having that kind of an exit makes it difficult to see if something's actually going on because it looks like something going on every night, essentially. So if they could make an improvement in the way people leave, that would certainly be helpful too. And I'm not aware of, of too many calls, you mentioned about people drinking in the parking lot, stuff like that, that they're obviously aware of. I don't believe we've received many calls from the establishment itself related to issues where, you know, officers could respond. Most of the time, it's, it's officers that we're putting there proactively that are, that are intervening, we hear calls from witnesses, patrons, and so forth about issues at the establishment. So I think communication is important if they are having a problem or think they may have a problem, to certainly reach out to us and contact us so we have a little bit more information about what they're seeing. Clearly, people, when they see our presence, they tend to hide their activities more so than with, with other people from the establishment.
I would, I would like to say that this is the, kind of the business you've chosen. Staying open at two A. M. in a quiet neighborhood is, is what you've chosen, and it means that you have to go over and above to keep things under wraps. And if I were you, I would, I would be contacting the police and Mr. Olivera, whoever it is, on a regular basis, how am I doing any improvements? Because that's your lifeline to keep this thing going.
Of course.
And I, and I, you have a chief that is fair, he listens, and he will react in a way that you deserve, either way it goes. And I think that my opinion is that you've got a tough haul, this is a tough thing for to pull off on a night-to-night basis.
Of course. And like I said, it's pretty much Friday and Saturday, those are our busiest nights. During the week, there's no issues, and yes, we do have one girl, you know, on during the weekdays, we haven't had any issues. I mean, if they need anything, they call me, I'm right there in a heartbeat, whatever they need. But like I said, we really, like I said, we've been improving, we bought the i-Det, so we have like a scan of everybody that's come in in case the police need anything. I mean, we're trying to do everything in our power.
Guarantee you that if you satisfy what the police suggest you do, they're a lot more qualified than we are.
No, of course.
And we will have, we won't have the problems, and that's what I think Sean is saying, that the message is clear.
No, I agree.
This is all on you because you've chosen this kind of business.
No, of course, and I agree with you one hundred and ten percent, sir.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Go right ahead.
When it comes to the summertime, we really had an issue with people hanging outside, like the chief said, and I just want to know, to the extent, how are we liable when it comes to, my security guards stay, one stays in the building, one clears the parking lot, and people go across the street to the car wash? Now, I know that is in New Bedford, how do we handle something like that? And I know it's affecting, like, if they're making noise, neighbors are going to call. And I can't have the bouncers go across the street to somebody else's private property and clear that out.
My suggestion would be, when it comes time for the summertime...
Mm-hmm.
Because you're not going to get that much now because it's just getting too cold and people want to go.
Right, exactly.
My suggestion would be sometime around April, contact Sergeant Olivera.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And have a sit-down, and with the knowledge that our D. P. D. has, I'm sure they can come up with something relative, simple, and easy for you guys to...
Our chief said, our chief said good communication, and that means use the police department.
Okay.
Because if you do it after the fact, it'll never work.
I mean, you know, I, I, to be honest with you, I'm a little bit encouraged to hear that some of the things that you've done, because I know what it was like to go from a bar that closes at one to go to places at two, you know, especially if you're working, you know, as a bartender and you want to have a nightcap before you go home.
And I've, I've done this for three years at the Thirsty Whale, and when I came in front of you guys, you guys said, keep doing what you're doing, you're doing great, and unfortunately, due to a certain crowd, it is hard.
I can tell you this, any, any business that serves alcohol is going to have its hiccups.
Yeah.
No ifs, ands, or buts about it. And it, how you handle those hiccups and how you address so you don't have those hiccups is tantamount as to how people are going to look at how you handle things.
Right.
And from what I can see right now by bringing you in here and, and going over what's going on, I can see that you, you're making the effort to, to keep it, keep it, keep your business alive...
Yeah.
You know, and, and keep it going, and I can, and I understand that, and I applaud that, you know, and I want to continue, and I want to, you know, we're not up, we're not up here to take business away. That is not our job. Our job is to protect the community and those within the community, that includes you. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to protect our citizens, our businesses, our people, and anybody who does work or live in this town. So, you know, and, and I applaud to see what you're doing, and I think, and I think you got the right track. Even us, the communication with our police as far as any kind of security issues or how to handle certain situations at night, even if you have to hire a detail, you know, for Friday and Saturday nights, that may help also, but I, I think you're doing the right thing.
No, we appreciate it. And like I said, us just changing our dress code and not allowing, like, hoodies in and this, that, like, last weekend, we had, well, I think the cops, that, one of the last dates you said, the reason why the cops had to show up, we had thirty people that, I want to say maybe right before Thanksgiving, the weekend before Thanksgiving, Friday and Saturday, we declined fifty people because of hoodies or jackets, hoods, those, and those are the troublemakers that we don't want in here. So we are trying to, you know, I tell my guys at the door, hey, just tell them we're at capacity, is what it is, can't let them in, and if they don't want to take off their hoodie, they're definitely not coming, you know, so...
Okay, we got a couple of comments, Mr. Mickelson, then Mr. Fox.
Am I right that you said that during the week you have one bartender?
A weekday, we have a bartender, yes, sir.
And that's it?
That's it.
No one else in the building?
It depends, well, yeah, it been, well...
Is or isn't.
What do you, well...
So the bartender's the manager and the, and, and the bartender.
We have, yeah, pretty much.
So, and then you also stated that if there's a problem, they can call you. I suggest that one of, either, either one of you or both of you in that damn building seven days a week.
All right.
If you're not there, you're responsible, you can make the decisions there. You're just waiting for things, something to happen and react after it happens. You've got to be proactive.
Yep.
You need to be in that.
Well, the reason why we're not there right now...
Get out.
Yes, and the reason, we're, we're working on getting somebody back in the kitchen, and once that kitchen is back reopened, which we're sitting down with somebody Wednesday, that's when all that. It's just because back in, when was it the kitchen closed? I'm not sure. There was a, probably wanna say maybe right before end of spring, a kitchen closed down, and just since then, we've just been kinda running on that. It's, if they're really slow, we only get a few people in there, we might even close on Tuesday, we're just, we're just waiting to structure the kitchen and decide that.
Mrs. Brooks?
Oh, I just wanted to let you know that I was, I'm happy to hear that you've gotten a separate security detail. It's hard for you to be both bartender and security, so I think that that's great. They come with their own liability.
Mm-hmm.
They know what they're doing, they dress the part and act the part, which is good. You can't use the Dartmouth Police as security, so I'm glad that you're doing them. But I think it's important that you keep Dartmouth Police in the loop, and it's very hard for you to, I'll use the term "police" outside of your establishment. And hopefully, the weather is cooler now, they'll go into their cars quicker, but you're one of the few places that are open. And so that's the other thing that you need to think about.
Exactly.
You know, do we, do you consider rolling it back to a different time?
Yeah, closing up a little early if we have to, whatever. We use that judgment depending on, based on the night.
It'll be your judgment going forth, because I, you know, first you're here, but I am surprised at how few police reports we have on many establishments. That's why yours stuck out.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I understand.
Which, you know, in all honesty, you're doing the right thing by calling them to get help in. You don't wanna not call so that you don't have a paper trail and then have a problem.
Okay.
It is hard just being on that New Bedford-Dartmouth line. We're getting allotted.
Okay, well, here's where we stand. It's December 5th. Your license you have now is good through the end of the year, and we start the renewal process again. It's all on you to work with the police and your staff to make things right. You got a tough, tough road there, but good luck to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate everything.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We're now going to the Dartmouth Police Department, Charles Christie Overpass Rededication. Who's stepping forward for that? It's a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
Chief is here.
Repeat customer tonight.
[laughing]
So, just to start out with a little bit of history, I did send you in your packet, it's kind of the biography of Patrolman Charles Christie. In, in 1966, we suffered a line-of-duty death where Officer Christie was essentially struck by a construction vehicle when they were constructing 195. He was working the traffic detail at that time, and died as a result of his injuries from being struck by the vehicle. With the help of Craig Terzland, who's, who's here tonight, he's our department historian, done a lot of great work for us, including with the 100th, which we were able to celebrate due to him discovering when we were established. But one of the, one of the things he's worked on more recently is the death of Charles Christie. We were able to submit a packet to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which they accepted. Officer Christie's death, and on May 13th, 2023, he'll be formally dedicated and included on the memorial wall in Washington DC at the 35th Annual Candlelight Vigil during National Police Week. So that's a little bit of the history of Officer Christie. In 1967, the overpass, Reed Road Overpass on 195 was dedicated to Officer Christie. What we're looking at now is currently, there's one sign up, double-sided sign. Normally, there's signs going each way on the road, as well as on the highway itself. So we're working to get that properly marked and potentially rededicated to Officer Christie. So I wanted to make the board aware of that and just request your support should we need it to get that project completed.
So do we need to vote on, on anything for extra signage?
I don't know, the chief is gonna pursue it.
It would be Mass DOT, I believe, would be the agency who would, who would handle that. It is state property.
Just so we can get a.
It's the state property, so to say, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
So we don't need to vote?
We don't need to vote on this.
No, it's.
It's quite a history.
No, it's just, you know, I mean, very few people in this town probably know who Charles Christie is. And they're saying, you know, why, why is this bridge, you know, dedicated to him? You know, so, once in a while, you have to revisit history just to kinda get a concept of what's going on. You know, I mean, there are some other, there are others, there are other memorials in town where people are like, "Who is this person?" You know? And I can tell you, one of them is, you know, Private Cohen, you know, at the corner of Hicksville and Farnes Connor Road. Who's he? I know who he is, because I was, when I was first elected on the park board back in 1980, I was asked to do something over there because that memorial had just basically gone, you know? So something was able to get done there. So there's very, you know, sometimes you need to revisit this to know the history of this town. And this is probably one of the ones that really sticks out like a sore thumb, because nobody knows who Officer Christie was.
Right, I agree. So hopefully, this, this at least brings some information to the public about, you know, what that is, and if we could get that rededicated and properly marked, that would go a long way as well.
I think that.
All for it.
It's, it's totally proper that we acknowledge all the work that Mr. Terzland's done for our town. Over time, he's, he's got a hungry thirst for history and.
It's a, it's.
I just wanna make a difference.
It's a, it's a wonderful read, actually.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I mean, the whole family, the lineage, it's incredible.
You're soon gonna do some history, aren't you?
Yeah, well, you might have to.
Yep, okay. You all set with us, chief?
Thank you for your support.
And we're gonna now move, move our agenda on a bit, we're now gonna move it up to the Dartmouth Community Television and Dartmouth Police Department telephone, no?
The handicap parking.
Handicap parking first. Yeah, let's deal with that, you know, we can get to the fun stuff.
Chief's haunted again.
So regarding handicap parking, I know you guys had discussed it, I think at the, at the previous meeting. I was asked to provide some data on, on handicap parking. I included some data on overall parking, as well as broke out the handicap parking data. So I'm not exactly sure what the discussion was, but the, I'm sure it's on more enforcement. A couple of points I just wanted to bring up regarding enforcement and some of the things that make it difficult for us to do enforcement. One of them is, and I, I included in the packet a list of buildings that we've identified, these are the ones that we've looked at and are aware of, there's probably more, we didn't do a, an assessment of the whole town, that's not really our area. What we find commonly is that they're, they're not marked properly, meaning the handicap parking. When they're not marked properly, according to code, essentially, we normally don't enforce the violations at those locations because they don't meet code. The other issue is with the, the use of the placards. Years ago, the town was looking to pass a bylaw that would make it a violation if, if someone forgot to put their placard in place. When we, when we enforce these parking violations, we spend, you know, a decent amount of time driving through parking lots, giving out tickets. Many times during the appeal process, we hear that it wasn't an actual violation, it's just a person forgot to put the placard up. And those are normally dismissed, because there's no, there's no violation now for forgetting to display it essentially. Now, the town could move forward with, it's a violation, but normally, they, they choose not to do that, and they don't have any alternative, like a smaller fine maybe, for failing to display it, because the problem you run into is, we give the ticket to a vehicle essentially, not a person. And so when a person shows up at a later date with a placard, we don't really know if that person actually was the one using the car on that day or not. So at least if there was some fine maybe that could go along with it, the hearing officer could decide, you know, a more appropriate action than either give them the $250 fine or, you know, a smaller fine maybe as a penalty for doing that. And the other problem with the handicap placard enforcement is the abuse, I'll say, by the holders of the placard, whether they let someone borrow it, and it's also a common misunderstanding that you can utilize it and sit in the vehicle. Essentially, the law requires that you, you're not just, it's not just a parking place because you're handicapped, it's to get you into the store. So if you're going there to the store with someone else, but you don't, as the handicapped person, intend to actually go in the store, you're not supposed to park in that parking spot. So, you know, our job is to keep those places open for people who need them, or people who are gonna be going into the store. And unfortunately, it's some of the people who hold these placards that kind of feed into the actual problem and are blocking those parking spots from being used, that people who actually need them to walk into the stores. So there's just a little bit of information on the parking violations, but I'm willing to hear any suggestions.
So we have 18 locations with problems with signs.
Well, that's, that's just the 18, like, we didn't, we didn't go to every business in town. Throughout the years, these are some of the locations that we've become aware of.
At this point, this is what we have to, to look at.
Yeah, it's signs and markings.
For various reasons, the pavement was, was redone and never, the sign was never replaced. I think we need to look at some of these locations and get after the, the owners of the property and, and get these signs up.
Correct, I agree. Now, we don't, we don't handle that part of it, reinforce the signs, but not the putting up of the signs.
I think it's in the building department would be, would be part of that.
Okay.
So we need to get, we need to go through that, that process and, and find ways to get these signs back up properly and have them, and enforce, and now enforce them.
Yeah, because it, you know, it is, it is a hefty fine.
Pet peeve for me, I'll tell you.
So we wanna make sure people have proper notice, because it is, it is a big fine when you park in one of these parking places.
And rightfully so.
Right.
Because it really is a pet peeve.
Yep.
And that's all I have to say.
I mean, as far as the, getting the proper signage and, and pavement markers and whatnot, I know that it's building, but it's also planning. Because planning had to pull, you know, a lot of these businesses had to pull the parking, parking plan. So part of that parking plan is the designation of handicapped spaces. So at some point in time, we need to have a body, a person, go around to all the establishments and, and sending out letters from this office, you know, "Get your handicap stickers, you know, parking spaces in, in, in line." One of, I had brought this up because I was given the Mass General Law where a community can have a designated person, one person out of, I think, out of 20,000, for every 20,000 people, you can have a civilian go around tagging cars. Whether or not I agree with that idea, I don't know.
We, we currently do that.
Well, I know with, with.
Which is to some, to a limited extent, yes.
Right, with the limited staff, right. I understand that.
You're working for the town.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Sean was talking about.
Yeah, it's just, it would be like, it would be like hiring this guy to go around, you know, tagging cars, and then all of a sudden, I mean, he tags the wrong car, and then all of a sudden, you get somebody, you know, who had, who's, you know, whacking with a cane or something, you know, you don't wanna do that. I don't, that I don't wanna get involved with. You know, but, but you, you see it, it, it becomes, you know, the, the problem, it becomes people saying, "Well, they got the best spaces, so I'm only gonna be there for a few minutes, so I, you know, who cares?" Well, you know, the guy who needs the parking space needs it.
Yeah, that's the most common excuse we hear, is, "I just ran in for a minute."
Right, or the guy that parks, you know, the one that I like is the guy that parks in between, you know, the van openings. You know, because, oh, that's not a handicap space, because it's, just because it's x-ed out between two spaces, they can park there, because, you know, but there's a reason why that happens, because I've seen it. You know, and I've seen somebody with a van trying to get in there, but they can't open it, and they can't let their kid out, you know, because they need it. So something like that. So, I mean, at some point, if the situation is where we need to address with the businesses to get their markings in there and the designations, then we will do that. At least, at least on our end to help you guys do your job, make it easier for you, so that, you know, if it does happen, it does happen.
I have a question. This was brought up by this board, and enforcement and the reality of the way things happen is hands, it's in the hands of the police department. So my first question is, in your view, is this a, a, a critical problem that is so overabused that we need to do something, or should we be doing something that's maybe a little less draconian to try to tighten up the system? And what do you recommend?
Sure. So occasionally, we do get complaints about handicap parking violations, and we address those as we, as we receive them. In addition to that, as the officers are out in patrol, time permitting, they will go through parking lots and check for parking violations, you see the numbers here that they're issuing. In my opinion, it's not, it's not a huge problem around town that we're aware of. However, at the same time, when we put a dedicated person during the summer months, you can see a pretty drastic increase in the amount of tickets being issued. So that tells me that clearly more can be done to enforce that with a dedicated person. Now, around town, it's a big town, we have a lot of businesses driving through parking lots, takes a long time, and so does writing out parking tickets. So it's, it's very time-consuming. So the officers do the best they can with the time they have available to give out tickets. But clearly, with a dedicated person doing it, we can probably almost double our numbers, essentially, because that person has the, their entire shift.
Well, along with that would be to have to set up the, all the markings and signage around town to then be able to enforce it properly. So we're talking about a pretty multi, multitasking effort, and do you recommend we do that? Or do you wanna come back to?
If we, if we think there's a problem with handicap parking, I mean, clearly, we're able to issue a lot more tickets with handicap parking when we have a person dedicated doing that. And, and I would agree, Mr. McDonald talked about, you know, maybe a civilian or someone like that. I don't think I'd wanna tie up a police officer dedicated just to driving around, issuing parking tickets. Like I said, we do that in the course of our, our job as time permits, but to dedicate an officer to that, I don't think would be the, the best choice. We've had, we've had luck during the summer months when we have a traffic supervisor available to do that. It's worked out well for us, and you can see the numbers have increased quite dramatically.
If you go by the numbers, excuse me.
Yeah, I, yeah, go ahead.
If you go by the numbers, if we had this all buttoned up, signed properly, and put a dedicated person on it, it would pay for itself 10 times over. Is that what we wanna do as a town?
I have a comment. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, the city of Fall River have three full-time officers. That's all they do.
It's the city.
Nothing else. I understand that.
City of Fall River has 10 times the cops that they do.
But I'm just bringing it out, just, it's, just to bring it out there.
Yeah.
Three full-time officers.
Mrs. Brooks?
That's all they do, in full uniform.
Well, knowing, looking at, I certainly have seen in the summer the traffic supervisors in parking lots and, and checking those things, which I think is great, it's a great use of, of them in the summer months. But it concerns me when I see a list of, that these places have either no signs or the parking mark, markings aren't there. But I'm sitting here saying, "Okay, well, still, who's on first? Is this a planning department issue? Is this a building department issue?" I think we have to go back and figure out who's going to enforce that if these signs are up. I think we're giving the wrong message if we're saying it's, if it's not a problem, because now, if hands off, I don't have to worry about it until the summer, well, I might park in a, a bad spot.
The first question is, do we wanna make this a, an enforced program that enhance, in every way enhance what we're doing now? Or do we wanna just, uh, just, you know, tighten it up a little as a town? Mr. McDonald?
I think, I think our, our first step, okay, is to make sure that the tools needed is, are completed. So, I would task Mr. McGinnis to sit down with Mr. Bragger and Mr., um, and, um,
Planning Board, Planning Department.
Planning Office, yeah.
Grady.
Yeah, go Grady, thank you.
Christine.
I see Amy, I'm ready to say Amy, but it's not Amy, I know it's not Amy.
Oh, yeah, no.
But, I, to, to, to sit down with them and to go, because there's also, to be honest with you, there's also, as part of some of the planning, some of the ZBA also has some things where they require. So, that's also part of the, so I know that falls under the purview of Mr. Bragger. But, you know, the parking plan is also important, too. So, I think that what needs to be done, and then, at some point in time, we need to have a, um, categorization, right, for all intensive purposes, of all the, um, handicap spaces and what needs to be done. And then, we send out letters to the businesses saying, this is what needs to be done. Get it done.
I, I, I still go back to, what is our direction here? Do we want to do all these things and make it a town that has a tight, well-understood program, is well-signed and enforced?
Yeah, I think for the people that need handicap parking.
I do, too.
I think we need to do the right thing for them.
I think we need to establish.
I mean, this isn't, I mean, you know, I, I don't want this coming across that this is a money grab by the town, because it's not. This is an enforcement of what is, what is on the books and what is fair to everybody. You know, if you're, if you're, if you wanna use a parking space to go in to get a quick cup of coffee, because it's closest to the door, then you know something? There's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for you. And, and I'm almost at this point in time, because I know we can go up to five-hundred dollars, okay? And...
Spend some cup of coffee, Mr. McGinnis.
Yeah, you got it.
Then park where you're supposed to be.
It better be a double espresso, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
Starbucks is doing it every day.
You know, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with increasing the fines, because you wanna, you know, you wanna be lazy and stupid and take away from somebody who actually needs it, then you deserve to get whacked.
I would like to make a recommendation that after the first of the year, Mr. McGinnis comes to us, and we may, we put together a proposal, a small subcommittee to look at the issue, whoever he wants to include. Let's not, this, not a committee that goes on for six or eight months, and decide then, what is the town we wanna do, and how we're gonna enforce it, in whatever way that is.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, in looking at our list, you know,
This is partial list.
We have, there's, there's two buildings in here that are municipal.
Oh, my.
Okay? So, and I know one of them was recently done. The, the parking stripes were done, so.
Some guy with a bucket of paint, right.
Yeah, some, some company in, in town did it.
Does that sound...
But, still, I mean, you're looking at it, you know, this, we're at fault, because we're, we haven't done our own.
We got a lot of work to do, okay. So, we're gonna, um, we're that clear, we, do we need, excuse me? I know it. Do we need to vote on that at all, or just establish?
No, get it done.
Okay. Okay, Mr. McGinnis? Anybody else have any comments? Get it done, that's what we wanna hear, right. Okay. Uh, next, Chief, I can think, uh, maybe you're not going anywhere yet, we're gonna move down the, um, agenda to the Dartmouth Community Television and Dartmouth Police Department telethon.
Okay, so, uh,
We gotta get that, we gotta get that placard down there, so we can put that on.
I'd like the chief to stay up with, with me here, if that be okay, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank you as well as the rest of the board, and, uh, Mr. McGinnis for having us in tonight. Um, I really appreciate you having me, and as, uh, another bald-headed presenter, this is great.
Your name, your name, name and rank, please.
Certainly, it's Kyle Costner, detective with the Dartmouth Police Department. Much appreciated. Um, as you know, the, uh, the annual toy drive's coming up, we've been doing it for the past six years. To say I'm humbled each year is truly an understatement. Uh, when I was approached by Jerry Pinto, uh, who represents Safe Zones out of New Bedford, uh, it was twenty seventeen, uh, I believe, twenty, no, I'm sorry, we went into our seventies, twenty fifteen. Uh, you know, I really didn't know what to expect. Um, sure, we'll put a sign in front of Target, we'll bring out a couple of guys, and we'll collect toys. Our first year was a tremendous success, and ever since this time, ever since that time, rather, I should say, it's been, uh, overwhelming. Um, I know that it has the title of the Dartmouth Police Toy Drive, but truly, it's a community toy drive, it really is. When you see the amount of volunteers, the amount of people who donate, the amount of businesses that are involved, um, i- i- again, the word I can say is just, uh, humbled. Uh, I look forward to it each year. Um, you know, as you know, sitting on the board, that we deal with ninety-five percent of our stuff is people complaining. This is that one time of year where everybody certainly comes together and shows their, uh, you know, shows their love and affection for this community. Um, with that being said, uh, we're gonna have a new caveat to this year, where we're gonna be doing a telethon. I cannot take credit for this, I will not take credit for this. Pete.
It sounds like a Peter thing, yeah.
If it works out well, take the credit.
Certainly does. Pete's, Pete's always standing behind me, but, uh, certainly, he's gonna take the credit for this. Uh, he contacted me this, uh, probably about a month, month and a half ago, uh, regarding setting up a, a telethon, which I thought, wow, what a, what a, what a wonderful idea. Um, this is gonna allow people, the opportunity, who can't get out to donate toys or any type of, uh, you know, even a cash donation at Target, have the ability from their homes to make a donation. Uh, with the help of the Dartmouth Police Athletic League, we were able to, uh, you know, set up, set up an account, uh, that's gonna have a Venmo QR code attached to it. So, people can certainly just go on their phone, their laptop, whatever the case may be, and make a donation to the effort. Um, so, I, I think that that's a credit to Pete, his entire crew over at Dartmouth Community Media. It's just showing their importance to, you know, not only us, but this community, uh, on a whole. Um, with that being said, also, uh, the Dartmouth, uh, Dartmouth High School TV Media Program, uh, is gonna be involved. Um, which, again, is just another branch of our community that just, to me, is outstanding, that you're gonna have young kids coming in, I say young being my age, high school kids coming in to help us out. Uh, to me, that's, that only, not only shows the pride they have in the community, but the thirst that they have to better themselves and to be involved in their community and, you know, above and beyond what their tasks at the school encompasses. I know the questions come up quite a few times, and I, I will try to make this brief, uh, about where do the toys go? Uh, so, I'd like to give credit where credit is due with that, is that we bring our school resources and, or score res, school resource officers in each year. And, I mean, they're, they have their finger on the pulse of every kid in their schools. Um, we're able to find out what families are in need. Another branch of that is gonna be, uh, Dolores Joseph, the youth advocate in town. Dolores, I can, oh, I can say she is unique. I love her to death, and she certainly gets a job done, if you will. Um, I hear from Dolores about twice a year. Once is always with a problem, and once is during the toy drive, which I love, because that makes my job that much easier. Uh, Dolores, uh, has already contacted me, she has several families in town that are, that are in need. Um, and then, with that being said, we even go above and beyond that, obviously, with our social media, we get messages all the time from people, how do I sign up for this program? Um, now, mind you, we vet out those people as far as, okay, who needs what, you know, and, you know, we, we look at them socio-economically, okay? Is this a family that's just looking for free stuff, or do they really need it? So, we vet them out, um, accordingly. Uh, and, and it's just, it goes on and on and on. I know last year, uh, you know, I know Amy's in the crowd, um, she contacted us about a family that didn't even come to us, it was through a member of her staff that they knew it. And without hesitation, we, uh, you know, we, we saw the family, and we gave them exactly what they needed. With the fund being set up this year, uh, it's going through the Dartmouth Police Athletic League, it's gonna give us the opportunity to not only help during Christmas time, but year-round, which is something that I, I love. Um, you know, toys are great, but also gift cards to Shaws, gift cards to supermarkets are also great. And there are certainly people, particularly, uh, you know, in this day and age, that could use a little bit of assistance. So, uh, the toy drive is this upcoming Saturday from nine to four, uh, DCTV's gonna be broadcasting there from ten to two. Um, you know, I certainly hope that we'll see as many people as possible there, but bringing people to this is never a problem, so I just wanna thank the board for, you know, allowing us to come in tonight to, uh, give it a plug, and, uh, we really appreciate it.
I'm sure everybody knows where it is, but just...
Yeah, you, I had mentioned Target earlier on, that it's always at Target. They've been wonderful to us each year, they, uh, I think they look forward to us coming for obvious reasons, you know? But they're, uh, they're very generous as far as things are concerned, and, uh, we'll have plenty of officers on hand. Uh, again, I, we see pretty much every department member there at some point during the day with their families helping out. It's never a lack of volunteers, and, uh, I'll make sure we keep an eye on, uh, handicap parking while we're there.
Especially before we get to the rules change, yeah.
Yeah, 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 exactly. So, uh, you know, if anybody had any questions, or if Pete wanted to say something, uh, you know, I would more than welcome him to the microphone.
Yeah, I, I just wanna thank also, like Kyle said, the DHSTV Media Program, they actually came to me at the beginning of the year, and it was actually a thought in my head last year when I went to the toy drive. I was getting some toys at Target, and I'm like, you know, I wanna get something for, you know, somebody that's fourteen, fifteen, and I wasn't sure what to get, so I got a few gift cards, and then, talking to Kyle after, I said, you know, how, how about some cash? Would that, would that work? And he said, oh, yeah, cash is great, you know, and we're always got people that are a little bit older looking for stuff, so. Um, so, it was kinda in back of my head, and then, like I said, the, the, Mr. Parati from the TV Media Program said, hey, you, you wanna do a fundraiser with us, like some kind of telethon? I said, yes, I do. And I said, I know exactly where we're gonna start, you know, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel, these guys have been doing a great job for many years. So, we figured we'd team up with them and hopefully make it a success. Uh, we invited the department heads to come on, especially the ones that are involved in social, um, you know, things. You know, hopefully, they'll come on and say a few words about the services that they offer. Anyone, you know, you, you all are invited to come on, just stop by, we'll get you on. We got, uh, Paul Santos, that's gonna do most of the hosting. And then, um, we also got a couple of students from the, uh, high school that are gonna do some hosting, uh, Ryan and Haley, I believe is her name. Um, but, um, so, we're, we're, we're looking to, you know, hopefully build upon it, you know, that we, we had some grand ideas when we first started talking about this six months ago, but we kinda brought it down, and we'll, we'll get it this year decent, and then, hopefully, come back even bigger and better next year. So, thank you.
It's great.
A, uh, it's a proud, proud moment in our town.
I love the fact that you're doing the telethon and thinking about the twelve-month effort for, to support our families, because this is a time where people feel generous around the holidays, but there are still people in need in February. And, you know, there's a, there's a gap, so, thank you very much for filling that gap.
Uh, Mr. Chief, right ahead. I'd just add something briefly, um, I don't think Kyle was gonna mention, but, you know, essentially, we've had this thing through rainstorms, snowstorms, uh, the turnout has always been tremendous from the public and the donations, uh, as well as the volunteers who go out there and dedicate their time to this. Um, but Kyle's really spearheaded this thing, made it what it is today. He's grown it each year, and I just wanted to recognize what he's done to, to make this happen, because he really is, uh, fully behind this program, and, like I said, made it what it is today, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Kyle.
Great job.
Mr. McGinnis?
All right, I, and I just wanted to talk about, Peter Chase, he brought this up six months ago, he had this idea, and, you know, to, to do a telethon in a municipality is not easy, because there's a lot of issues with funding, there's a lot of state laws around procurement to see, uh, so Peter worked with our, uh, town council to kind of, come up with a way that we could perform this telethon and partner with the Police Athletic League. So, uh, Peter really did a lot of work behind the scenes as well, as he usually does, but this is something that, you know, kinda went above and beyond, so.
This is, this is very similar to what, uh, Old Whaling City TV used to do a long time ago at the, over at Buttonwood, you know, with the telethon there. You know, and one of our own, our own Bill Cabral, who used to, you know, live in town, used to build, used to be involved with that, and this is just bringing back so many memories. It's just, but, um, yeah, no, definitely, I, I'm looking forward to this.
Just the beginning, right?
I have something for you.
It's just the beginning.
It, it really is. Uh, chances are, this is gonna be my last one with retirement coming up, but I'm gonna be there in civilian life.
I don't think so, but no.
Be there.
Time to do it.
I, I promise, it's something I can't give up.
You'll have more time for this and more time for social media, dude.
Oh, God, let's, uh, let's certainly hope not. Um, but, you know, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to acknowledge Pete. Um, Pete and the, the cast over at Dartmouth Community Media are absolutely tremendous. I, I use them probably ad nauseam. Pop, I, I know my, when my number shows up on Pete's phone, he's probably gonna say, oh, heck, what's he got going on now? But have, they've never said no, and they're, uh, certainly always one-hundred percent there for the police department. They're a great friend, and, uh, I can't say enough about Pete and the whole crew over there. So, uh, they could be commended for this effort, and I, uh, I thank everybody for their time, and certainly, if any, anybody had questions, we'd, uh, we'd, we'd love to answer them.
Comments, anybody? Anybody out in the crowd wanna say something? Okay.
All right, terrific.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Well, that's, that's the way to have a meeting, right there, okay. Um, next on the agenda is the Community Service Outreach Team update. Please step forward.
Uh, yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
So, uh, as I mentioned, the board have been previous meetings, we, you know, we're starting to see an uptick in, uptick in homelessness in town, uh, particularly coming out of COVID, uh, and there's an increase in evictions, and there's just a, a lot of people out there that are in need of services of all kinds, social services. So, uh, we put together an, an internal team, and these are all staff that have daily jobs, that they're working here for the town, but they've kind of gone above and beyond to go outside of that, to look at, at ways to provide outreach to the community, to provide the best services we can. So, Amy's here to, to lead the group, and...
Say exactly what you just said.
Oh, you're gonna say it much more eloquently than I just did.
I, I need to ask you one question. Do we have any hard numbers of how many homeless we have in Dartmouth?
Amy, can you talk to that?
Sure, sure. So, good evening, thank you for having us. I'm Amy DePietro, I'm the Director of the Council on Aging, here on behalf of the Dartmouth Community Service Outreach Team. So, first, I just wanna explain kind of what Sean was just explaining. So, we've seen an increase in calls to various departments regarding issues of hoarding homelessness and other social issues. When it comes to social service issues within the town, there's no such department to address the need. We have the Council on Aging, who assists seniors sixty and over, the Youth Advocate, who is handling school-aged children, and we have the Veteran Service Agent, who assists veterans. But who is addressing those in between, eighteen to fifty-nine and three-quarters? Um, and who is directing them towards the appropriate service and resources that are available to, uh, residents of this town and the community? So, various town departments have gathered together to form the Dartmouth Community Service Outreach Team, much in the same way we formed, they formed, the COVID Response Team. The Community Service Outreach Team members include a representative from the Dartmouth Police Department, Dartmouth Fire Department, and Stat Ambulance Services. Municipal departments, such as the Council on Aging, the Board of Health, the Housing Authority, Dartmouth Veteran Services, the Building Commissioner, and the Assistant Town Administrator. It's important that we educate each and every department in this town as to the available resources. We, as town employees, are the frontline of community service. Our mission of the Community Service Outreach Team is to identify the needs of at-risk individuals in the community and the available resources. Our goal is to educate the community on the needs of at-risk individuals and to promote, link, and implement needed services, as well as coordinate with existing services on behalf of these individuals. Our outreach team will meet on a monthly basis to review old cases, referral of new cases, and a discussion on relevant matters. A case conference may include the presentation of a complex social situation that a department, a department may have had difficulty resolving within their own parameters. We feel the knowledge of our team is greater than the individual. The benefits of having such a team will include using a team approach, bringing ideas from non-traditional sources, such as the knowledge of the police, fire, and Board of Health laws and ordinances, and understanding the strengths and the limitations of each town department. We also hope to promote education and training. We've scheduled our first Resource Fair for December nineteenth to be held at the North Branch Library between ten and two. We're hoping to network with surrounding agencies and learn more about their resources, as well as connect people in the community to such resources. We will be providing lunch from a generous donation from the Friends of the Elderly. Um, I would like, at this time, to introduce you to Matthew Danseroe, he is the new Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator. He has been in the community, um, he can address your question, Mr. Mickelson, as far as the numbers that we're seeing. Um, I also know, uh, Joe Bragger, the Building Commissioner, would like to speak as well. Thank you.
So, I've been working, uh, at the Council on Aging for about, um, four months. And prior to working at the Council on Aging, I worked mainly nonprofits, homelessness, immigration, low income, disability, that type of thing. And we all know currently that there is, um, increased cost of living, increased cost of food, increased cost of everything. Um, at the Council on Aging, I've been seeing things like, um, grandchildren living with grandma. Uh, dad can't afford a place to live, so kids all live with grandma, increases all her bills. Um, I've seen a seventy-eight-year-old who's bouncing from Dartmouth to Fairhaven between her two daughters, living on a couch here and there. Um, seen grown, uh, children living with their parents, that type of thing, making these at-risk type of families structures. I've seen alone, just in four months, I've done seventy SNAP or food stamp applications for seniors in Dartmouth, which is a crazy number. Um, forty fuel assistance applications, and I think one of the good indications is Dartmouth Fuel Assistance. Last year, which had about thirty, thirty-five applicants, has two-hundred-and-fifty-eight applicants this year. Um, so, there, there's a real need in the town for access to services that historically have never been in the town. One of the big, long-term, decade-long issues in the town are the numerous cheap motels that are in the town. For years and years and years, people have used these as a place to shelter when they have no place to go. They kinda come to Dartmouth and kinda get sucked in this black hole of living in the hotel, running out of money or running out of time, ending up in the woods, going back to the hotel, that type of thing, and all the while, not really getting any services. So, my thought when I came in was, you know, we gotta bring the services in, we gotta bring the people who serve these people to the town. So, that's one of the things this, 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 this little task force is attempting to do. Um, I was actually at the Capri last Friday. Um, I met a fifty-four-year-old woman there who'd only been there for three or four days. She had your typical, I lost my housing, I tried to find more housing, unaffordable or can't find housing, so the next cheapest thing was the Capri. Hey, I got a roof over my head, I got a bathroom, I got a shower, I've got that. But once she got to the Capri, no one would know she's there. You know, no services would know she's there, unless she reached out. And I happened to be there at one fifteen on a Friday, and she saw me, and of course, I can lead her where she needs to call, where she needs to go, that type of thing. But if I wasn't there, she would just be another one of these, uh, cases that, you know, they spend the twenty days at the Capri, or the, or the Dartmouth Motel, or wherever they spend that twenty days, and then, where do they go next? Um, I would really like to see the town establish some type of centralized, um, contact, where, say, somebody comes into the town, is at a camp, or is at, they can call, because trying to reach the services is really confusing. The money where it covers is really confusing. For example, Greater New Bedford doesn't cover Dartmouth. Um, the Greater Bristol County Co, uh, Homelessness Coalition covers Dartmouth. So, even though New Bedford's right next door, can't really access that money. So, I've been trying to... So I've been trying to bring together services, bring together UMass Dartmouth, those type of things into this type of program, because I really think Dartmouth is very unique with that two miles of motels in the business district, with all the woods around. I think if you actually counted the numbers of the people who are in the hotels, and maybe in and around the town in cars, it'd probably be in the hundreds. That would be my guess. Every year, the federal government does what's called the PIT count, the Point in Time Count, and I know Dartmouth has never participated in that, but I think that's one of the things we're gonna try to participate in this, where you go around town and you count the homeless, you count the people in the cars, you count the people in the woods. You can also, as an aside, count the people in the hotels, and, you know, if you get up to 300 people, you're doing numbers like New Bedford is doing. You know, and I I just think it's a problem that's long been in Dartmouth, that's never really been addressed. And, you know, with my history, I I can see a a solution, you know, it's not a quick solution, it's a long-term solution, but I can see a solution to trying to address some of the things that are going on in these uh in the hotels. And these solutions can, on top of that, help residents of Dartmouth who are experiencing, you know, I'm on a fixed income, my fixed income doesn't go up as fast as the cost of living, that type of stuff. And so, you know, there has to be almost a centralized place where someone in Dartmouth can contact, and then they can get the referrals where they need to go. Questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that I know when we were in between youth advocates, the thought was to change the title from youth advocate to family advocate, because we were acknowledging the fact that there's this gap of age span. I don't know if it's something that she can expand, but I totally agree that there is a need to both get the PIT count and to have a centralized, a phone number in Dartmouth, that then that person can tell you where to go.
They need to have a partnership with with the services that are out there. And, you know, over the years, services haven't necessarily come into Dartmouth for whatever reason, whether they know we're not welcome, whether there was, you know, just not the the interest in it, but the services are very interested. I mean, we have 20 services coming to this Resource Fair, who just want to meet with people in Dartmouth and that type of thing, and get that ball going.
I think that when we hired Dolores Youth Advocate, we had a vision that it would evolve into something. To think of what it was 10, 20, and 30 years ago, that position, and what it is now, what it requires, it's evolved. And your committee and Dolores's own intuitions are gonna, now I think we're ready to reevaluate that, because because we have such fine people who can who can take on those responsibilities. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I just, I think part and parcel of the problem is that Dartmouth has a reputation of being a rich community.
I agree.
And that the services aren't needed here because our people are well off, and that's not necessarily, that is not the case, not necessarily, no, it's not the case. Yeah, we do have people living in this community that don't need these types of services, but we have a great number of people who do. And I think a lot of that also has to come down, it's a pride thing. And I and I think a lot of the people that your neighbor, you know, doesn't want you to know that, you know, they need services, so they don't say anything. And I think that has, that really has changed in the last few years, and, you know, we're saying that this is, you know, this is something that needs to take a look at. Well, now we have a point in time in where we are that we need to make those changes. And I think this task force is going to be the impetus to make these changes, you know, and to get, you know, the recognition and to get people to say, hey, look, you know, the town isn't turning its back on its people, the town wants to help its people, this is what we need to do. But everybody needs to buy in on this, all right? And it's it's not just, you know, it's not just, it's, everybody has to recognize the effect that there are people out there in need, they do need the help, and they need the resources. And that resource is is not only staff and and people working for the town, but it's also, you know, some funding sources from the town to get this, to get where it's going. So we have to reevaluate, you know, our financial aspect to see what we can do to help this along, but yet, and still get the help to the people that need help.
I think when you talk a little bit about money, too, the numbers always bring in the money. So say you show you have 300 people in Dartmouth, well, then you have a real need to have more money coming to the system, because you've literally doubled what the entire Greater Bristol County continuum has, you know? And so that allows those services to drain more money into their system, and then who knows where that leads, you know? It's, yeah.
I just wanted to mention that Dolores was hoping to be here tonight, and I know that she had a few different stories, but the face of homelessness has changed. It could be a single mother with three children in the school system. The definition of homelessness is different for a senior, for somebody in the community, and for somebody for the school-aged child. But we're seeing it everywhere, unfortunately. Each department has been getting a call, you know, at least on a weekly basis, if not every other day. I I think Joe has a story to tell, excuse me.
Thank you. I appreciate that you would hear what the task force has to say, and especially for me, I'll be here two years in January, and coming from communities where I've seen large homeless homelessness, recognizing the signs out when we're out in the field, myself and looking around. If, I know it's kind of an out-of-sight, out-of-mind type of mentality sometimes, but it's getting to a place now where it could become a a safety issue also, because as we get to the cold weather, you're starting to see buildings that they're getting into, they're they're getting doors open, they're getting into them. So this becomes, everybody's here is aware of the Worcester Fire that lost all the firefighters, and I'll be honest with you, I lost friends in that fire. And that was all because of two homeless people with candles trying to keep themselves warm. That was the main, what happened with that fire and other fires that happened. The homeless, as again, as they transition out, you see them everywhere. They're on the corner of Rockdale and Dartmouth Street, I see them every morning, the homeless coming out from behind the fences, they're coming out from behind the woods, they're, believe it or not, they're at Round Hill. So, I mean, we were just not there too long ago, and I, and again, it comes from experience recognizing the signs. And that's what they're looking for now. They're looking for stairwells to get into, anywhere where it's warm. So the services are needed, and and Matt, and and Amy, and and Health Department, and Dolores, we're all trying to get together them up with somewhere within the town to try and help these people, so that they can transition them into a safe place, and not to a place where they could get them themselves hurt or someone else hurt in the long run. I think that's important, that the board needs to, for me personally, because I've seen the, I've seen the devastation. Coming from Lowell, we, I saw it every day. I saw what happens when they'd run extension cords from a, I could tell you horror stories, run throw-in extension cords over the wires on the street, plugging it into an outside outlet to a store across, and catch the building on fire, because they had the strip cord, and plug everything they possibly could into it. And all of a sudden, you have a three-family that's gone. I'm not, I know that's the extreme, but our whole goal right now is, we really wanna try and help those that are out there and get them some help, some services, so that before someone does get hurt. And they they do need it.
Safety is is a big issue, the safety.
I applaud that there's a task force that's willing to take it, the matter on, and is willing to say, how do we hope, how do we help our citizens, whether they're in homes or not in homes, they're our citizens, they're in the, within the boundaries of Dartmouth. We're not looking to round them up and ship them out, we're looking to account for them and get them the services that they, as human beings, are are in need of and worthy of.
And get them out of the woods and get them into a feed and get them into where they can have food.
Right. And we can get vouch, we can do, use the voucher system if we know that they qualify through the PIT count for the vouchers. And so that's a perfect avenue to use the hotels that we have, and we're fortunate that the hotels that we have along Route 6 are also, you know, within a a safe distance of Walmart, so they can get, you know, their staples, their food and things. So we gotta treat them right and give them a hand, not a handout, but a hand up. So thank you for doing that.
Anybody else have any comments in the audience on the board?
I have one. You talked about rounding people up. Sister Rose, right now, has an 85-person waiting list.
Oh, my gosh.
I have never seen waiting lists at homeless shelters. Samaritan Town has 125 for men waiting list. That's how crazy it is out there right now.
You hear, you hear about it every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
I've never seen waiting lists at homeless shelters.
But if you don't get your name on that list today, day one starts next year. So day one has to start for these people.
For these people now, yeah.
Yeah, it's very important.
Anyone else?
I I can honestly say that, speaking for me, you know, as I said when we first started this meeting with the Thirsty Will, you know, we on this board are here to serve one purpose, and that's to make sure our citizens and the people living in this town is safe, protected, and doing, and that's what we will do. So, you know, this is a great start. You know, you have to start somewhere, and this is probably the best start I've seen of anything, you know, thrust upon this town to go. Now we need, now we need to see how far can we get it done? So you have my support. I know you prob, and I'm sure everybody here will-
Absolutely.
-will give the support that we need to do, whatever we need to do, so.
It's quite a-
Thank you for your support.
What a team we have here. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Can we add an update for them at least at one monthly meeting? I don't know about that, but they could give you information to, I know they have the event on the 19th, so at a meeting in January, we'll get a report on how that went.
Sure.
Very, I'm interested in this, this, you know, PIT count and-
We don't know if we're gonna have a meeting.
What that, what, how we could access other funding sources if we knew ahead count.
Both a sobering but proud moment for the town. We have people who really are gonna do a job for us. Thank you. Next, a DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, State of Mass Title V update. Mr. McInnes?
Uh, yes. Uh, the Health Director, Chris Michaud, and Town Council Brian, Assistant Town Council Brian Cruz were at the last meeting to give an update on the Mass DEP's proposed amendments to Title V. At that meeting, the board, this board asked that we draft a letter to Representative Markie and Senator Mike Tigney, giving them information on the the board's feelings of Mass DEP's schedule for the implementation of these amendments. Wherein the town is in the process of drafting letters of concern with the proposed amendments by Title V. Chris Michaud could not be here tonight because he's attending a Mass DEP public session on the Title V amendments in Barnstable. But in your packet, you can see the letter that was drafted to Senator Markie and Mike, Representative Markie and Senator Mike Tigney. That gives them some of our concerns on a high level, but also asking them to extend the comment deadline, DEP is set of December 16th, which we think is short, it's between the holiday seasons, as he discussed last week. So I've spoken directly to Representative Markie as well, sent this letter, and he's he's committed to contacting DEP to see what he can do to extend that deadline. So the letter is in the packet.
I'd like to say something. This is an extremely serious matter. It's gonna affect an awful lot of residents in town and the health of our water and our and our bays, drinking water maybe as well. I want to make something perfectly clear. This this board is, recognizes the extent of what this means, and we are going to, as a group, as a team, we are going to commit the resources of this town, whatever committees it takes, whatever boards it takes. We have experience right here on our board, think about this morning, going back to the the Cecil Smith landfill, years and years of experience trying to get that right. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Mickelson, I think, were on the boards both at the time, great history of understanding how to deal with DEP and what to do and stand our ground. We Bliss Corner, we've had an issue there with DEP as well, we've had a lot of experience with that. It's an ongoing situation. Make no mistake that we understand as a board and as a group, we will stand by our town, we'll put, gather the best resources we have. Even our our town administrator is a, is an engineer himself, understands, he was on the Cape for many, many years. And the Cape is the, is the, it's a big issue here, because the Cape has giant issues concerning this, and I think the DEPs decided to just gang up on everybody else, including the Cape. So Mr. McInnes has that experience with us as well. We have great people in town. Mr. Michaud, where is he tonight? He's already in Barnstable, trying to team up with other towns. What are they doing? How are we gonna team up? They're not gonna push us around, we're gonna group together, and we'll do the right thing as a team, whether it be our town or other towns are in the same situation. So this is a matter that is 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 understood, and it's an ongoing thing, and we'll keep you posted on a regular basis. Any other comments or anybody else?
Well, I was able to to pipe in on the meeting in Lakeville Wednesday, last Wednesday. And what I had said Monday, I repeated Wednesday, including the calls for the extending commenting period and also for the for the delay in the implementation of these for at least a year. And I was actually pleasantly surprised to find out I wasn't alone in that, in that thought process, because several people afterwards echoed what I said, that they were in agreement. So maybe this is starting to get a little steam with some of the communities, but one of the things that really struck me is, is what DEP is doing is, is they're trying to make this one-size-fits-all. You know, and Chairman Alme of the DPW basically said, you know, what is the Cape is the Cape is entirely different in Dartmouth and Westport.
Yep.
And they're trying to make, you know, the regulations that would fit the Cape try to fit here, and it just doesn't work. Because there are some, there are some heavy implications, not only if, depends on how the town is is dealing with this. If the town just lays it on the homeowners, then the homeowners are on hook anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 for a system that generally won't do what the EP wants it to do.
They've said straight out, they expect to be 50% effective at best, yeah.
And the thing is, is that a lot of the nitrates is not coming from homes. It's not coming from homes. And, you know, you're, they're dealing with, see my, see, this is the other, this is the other problem that I have, and and I thought about this afterwards. You know, the town is is in working with collaboration with Buzzers Bay Coalition to do a lot of things. But yet, when it came time for DEP to look at what's going on, they went straight to the Buzzers Bay Coalition. Buzzers Bay Coalition never came to the town and said, look, we're working with DEP on these Title V regulations. They never came to us. So, you know, I I partly blame this on Buzzers Bay Coalition for not informing the town or the communities that this was coming out, you know? And I just don't, I understand they have a purpose, and 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 I applaud that purpose, but, you know, you're you're putting, you're putting a heavy burdenson on the people in town that, right now, can't afford it, you know? And if we go the other way, where the town wants to do a watershed permit, now, all of a sudden, you're gonna have an enforcement issue that's, we're gonna need, we're gonna need Title V enforcers to go around to the communities and making sure that everybody's, everybody's systems are running correctly, and if they're not running correctly, the town gets fined. And that in itself is not, is not good. You know, I mean, that- I mean, I don't know.
We've got a long, long way to go.
This is not a well-fought-out, and I said it in the meeting, and I said it the Monday night, and I said it Wednesday night. This is a knee-jerk reaction to the Conservation Law Foundation lawsuit against Mass DEP for water quality. That's what it is.
Well, I also, it's pretty recognizable, and Mr. Michaud's made it clear that the septic systems are one aspect of the entire problem, and it's not even a major aspect, it's a portion. So we've got a long way to go here, so we're on it. That's the message. Anybody else have any comments? Come right up. Your name, please, and address.
George. George.
Yep. You live in town, George?
Yes, I do. I've been living in town for forty years.
Okay.
Sean, I know you mentioned it's not the residents, it's not coming from the residents, but my question is, where is it coming from? Let me go backwards here a few seconds. Our water system in this town should be number one, should be A-plus, and it's not. And we all know what pesticides do, and we're all treating our lawns. Where's that going when it rains? You know what I mean? This is what we should be implementing. I'm not saying for residents, I'm saying for everybody. My opinion, we should not let any resident, any business have anything to do with pesticides or any of that matter to ruin our water system. That's what they're doing. Whenever we let somebody use, whenever somebody comes down the street, a green lawn or whatever, to do their lawns or things like that, you know what it's doing to the water system? We all know it. And that should be, our water system for every town should be number one, should be A-plus, but it's not. And it's because we have these people that come in and think they can do what they want because he knows this person, this person knows this person. That's my, I don't want to get into this deep because I can really, but you understand where I'm coming from?
No, you do.
I just think that if it were me, I would not allow any pesticide, any lawn hermiticide in my town, period.
George, I think that's absolutely going to be part of the equation, is that what this town wants to face, the decision it's going to make, and that's what we're going to end up doing, doing that kind of study, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting and making, we appreciate your comments.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, that's, I'm here to listen to everybody else, so, you know.
You, George.
I have my
We'll have more and more
Good to have the audience.
We'll have more forums, discussions as this thing rolls out. And it's not going to be just about septic systems, which it will be, but it's going to be about runoff and composting and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, runoff is a big thing, too, you know what I mean? Like I say, pesticides and hermicides, that's all.
Thanks for sticking with us.
All right, thank you.
That being said, I did have a group, a neighborhood, that contacted me with concerns about their well.
Sure.
And the wells in that area, which are being outside tested. But, you know, it is a concern for people, and it has to be a matter that we take seriously because it can and has impacted individuals' health.
I had someone contact me regarding the composting piles and what it's doing in the neighborhood, and it's not happy about it.
Lots of money involved in this.
Well, see, that's the other thing, too. I mean, you know, here you are, DEP complaining about, you know, nitrates, and yet here they are authorizing composting.
Right.
Okay? So it's like, you know.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
Very good.
Note to note the other ones doing
Next would be the two thousand twenty-three schedule, meeting schedule, which is going to take us through election, April. We've all had it. Anybody want to start with a comment?
Actually, can we, before we get into next year, can we finish this year?
Right.
Sure.
I mean, we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. We have two people on the board who won't be here on Monday.
Correct.
We have, and then after that, we're not scheduled until the ninth. That's a month. I would prefer to have a meeting on the nineteenth, as much as close to Christmas as possible. I'm not really thrilled about, but I know there'll be four of us available on the nineteenth.
I'll be back, myself.
So I would make the propose to not hold the meeting next on the twelfth, to have a meeting on the nineteenth, and then, as far as looking at the schedule posted here, January ninth.
Let's just address that one first, then. Right now, the proposal is to move the December twelfth meeting of next week to December nineteenth, two weeks later. Any comments?
That'd be my only date. After that, I'm gone.
Yeah, that's too late. Anybody comment on
I'm away that day, and I understand. I'm away for both.
Okay, we can Zoom from wherever you are.
I cannot.
We can find a way.
No, we can't.
Well, maybe, would Bruce Brooks like to attend in your place?
No, we'll be on a cruise, yeah.
All right, then, I guess, okay, so he won't be there. Any objections to moving from the twelfth to the nineteenth? Mr. Gracie?
No objection.
No objection. Do we need to vote on that, or?
Yes, and one thing to consider, I know we'll have to check, you had the joint workshop with the Finance Committee scheduled for the twelfth.
We can move that until next year.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Not on the nineteenth.
Well, we, okay, well, we were, that's right.
Well, let's take that
I'll talk to them, and they need to coordinate it and post it as well, but yeah, that's fine. Do you want me to see if they're available the nineteenth instead, or do you want me to push it to?
No, no, push it into twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll push the workshops.
Okay.
Okay, so the vote, okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we move the meeting of December twelfth to December nineteenth.
No.
And just to deal, December nineteenth.
Yep, no, you're right, yep.
And only to deal with issues before the Select Board, no workshops on that one.
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. So the meeting is now, it would have been a great meeting on the twelfth, too, but we're going to move to the nineteenth.
It'll be even better the next time.
Okay, exactly. Okay, the schedule now for January, the schedule is stated as January ninth and twenty-third. Martin Luther King Holiday is in between, February thirteen and twenty-seven, March sixth and twenty-seven, and April ten. Town election is on April fourth.
Yeah, that's fine.
I have a request, because I will not be here. My travel times, I'm coming to an end, but I will not be here on the twenty-third, and I would propose that we move to the thirtieth if we can. If not, that's okay, but I will not be here for sure on the twenty-third.
I could live with that, too.
The thirtieth works for me.
Thirtieth?
That's fine with me.
So we're changing, let's do that once more.
Twenty-third is out, thirtieth is in, January.
This will be, that will be the week that my daughter is being married.
January
Very exciting.
Hey, you better not be here.
Twenty-third
I will not Zoom for that meeting.
We're moving it to what?
Twenty-third to the thirtieth.
Paying for the wedding?
A proportion, yeah.
You better not be here.
It's a personal question.
To January thirtieth, correct?
Okay, out there, Mr. Gracie?
Yep.
So do we need to vote on that, or we have
You have to vote on
The whole schedule, okay.
I make a motion that we hold our meetings on January ninth, January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, February thirteenth and twenty-seventh, the same year, March sixth, March twenty-seventh, same year, and April tenth.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, thank you very much for accommodating me.
You'll get that out to us.
Much appreciated, yes.
Okay, good. License renewals, is that's next? Ready to move? Okay, all the subjects are the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Directive of Inspectural and Services approval. First one, restaurant, all alcoholic, common vic, entertainment with alcohol, Rachel's Lakeside.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Restaurant, all alcohol, common vic, Scuttlebutt Coffee Company.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, approved. All alcoholic restaurant, common vic, amusement devices, jukebox, pool table, entertainment with alcohol, Thirsty at the Cove.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed. Four to one, Thirsty at the Cove, approved with a four to one vote. Amusement, tilt.
So moved.
Where is this?
Second.
At the mall?
I believe so, yeah.
Permanent, it's a permanent thing at the mall? Oh, oh, okay, yep, the old Dream Machine. Thank you.
Correct.
I don't get out much.
Well, you knew that.
You're showing your age.
Yes.
Do we, we had a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
We did. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. That was, that worked out okay. We're done with that one, okay. Mr. McGinnis, Town Administrator update.
Yes, not a lot of updates because I was here last week, but our Assistant Town Administrator, Cody Hadad, has been selected to be the new Town Administrator for the town of Halifax. So he's excited about the new opportunity. Unfortunately for us, we'll be losing a quality employee. His last date of work will be January thirteenth. We've advertised the position today to look to refill it. Next, Library Director Lynn Antunes has announced her retirement March first of two thousand twenty-three. She's been with the town for forty-six years.
Wow.
So she has done her service to the town, so she'll be looking to retire and be meeting with the Board of Trustees to discuss the replacement and advertising in the process next week.
And we'll work with the trustees to make sure we give her a proper exit.
Yes. As I mentioned last week, the master plan final workshop is this Thursday, December eighth, at six-thirty, six-thirty to eight, here right in this room at Town Hall. We urge residents to go online to our website to review the draft master plan and come to the meeting and provide comment and input. Under procurement, the lease of the McBratney property, as the board knows, we issued a request for qualifications as required by mass state law to do any type of long-term lease. We received one submittal that was deficient in some information that's required as part of the RFQ. We've been going back and forth with the applicant to provide that information, but they have not been forthcoming with the information. So we're working with the Attorney General's Office to see what our options are on this. So we're trying to move forward as fast as possible on the lease, but this procurement process that's required by state law requires us to go through these things. The Recreation Center Owners Project Manager Request for Qualifications has posted, and we'll be looking for those applications to come in. They're due January nineteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The broadband study Request for Qualifications is going to be posted tomorrow, and that is going to do a study of the town's network, a freezability study, to have the town provide its own broadband service. Website upgrade, so we've been working with the vendor on our website upgrade, and just we have a tentative launch date of March first. So we'll be transitioning from one site to the new site over the next few months. And lastly, I just wanted to mention again, the telethon, the filibust telethon will be the Saturday, the tenth, from ten to two. That is all I have. Thank you.
Question, maybe not allowed, but I'll ask it anyway, tell me I can't, but regarding the RFP for McBratney property, is that something that we are not allowed to participate in until the RFP is completed, or is there some way to have a discussion about that?
No, in the RFP, there's evaluation criteria that are provided in advance to all of the applicants, and the information that's required is part of the submittal. So it's laid out very clearly in the Request for Qualifications, and when we look for submittals, we have to make sure that they meet the qualification, that if they meet what's requested for in the Request for Qualifications.
So it's safe to say that we almost legally cannot get involved until that is completed?
Correct. Now, if it comes to a point where, you know, this is why we're talking to the Attorney General's Office, and we, you know, generally what is done is the RFQ is reissued again to the public.
Okay.
But we're, you know, we're trying to weigh all our options to be equitable to the applicant that has applied, to see if there's a way that we can evaluate the application within the law.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, next would be Old Business?
Yes, not much. Bliss Corner, no new updates, as well as Lake Nokachoke, and you just heard about the municipal broadband.
Okay, we have no minutes for this meeting?
No minutes.
Right. Select Board Updates, any members would like to make any comments? Mr. Mickelson?
No.
Mr. Gracie?
Nope.
I'll stay incorrect. I just wanted to mention, because I think we talked about it before we were on air, yesterday's event, which was the tree lighting in front of the Town Hall, was very well-attended and a real family event. We had a great turnout. Everything was free. There were games and hot chocolate and things to eat, and really wonderful. Santa was there for pictures, and it was nice to see a bunch of community departments participating as well. And Friday night, we had the tree lighting down in Paidnaram Village, and Lou, who was one of the bridge tenders, was the honorary tree lighter, I guess. So it was a very nice event. Again, we were very lucky in between the, to have two events of very nice weather in between that Saturday of
Yeah.
Of horror, but two nice events kicking off the season.
The neat thing that I saw about the two events was the tremendous turnout of families and young families, three or four kids, two kids, but tremendous, tremendous turnout. And that's, you know, to me, it's heartwarming to see that the young, this generation, that generation
Yeah, our new families in town.
Are putting their roots in this town, and they want to stay here and make something great. And I'm very, very proud to be part of that. Thank you.
I would also like to just add that we have a lot of important issues coming along, and the kind of quality efforts from our staff and volunteers on our boards and committees continues, the quality, the people involved, the work we do, I think it's pretty amazing. It's a proud time for our town, and there are some giant issues that we need to face, and I think we have the people to do it. And I thank Mr. McGinnis for being the guy at the top who has to organize and get it done with good people, so. Anybody else, any comments? I think we're coming to the end.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. This meeting is now adjourned.